Good evening. We're calling this meeting of the Freetown Lakeville School Committee meeting to order.
Jean Fox.
Oh, here. Couldn't find you.
Here.
Laura Ramston.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here.
Jen Blum.
Here.
And Bob Clark, Sherri Baron, and Will Sankowicz are not available tonight and send regrets because this is probably one of the most momentous meetings of the year for very obvious reasons directly in front of us. But unfortunately, there's a number of reasons they couldn't be here. But you have us.
No.
Excuse me. I see Light Cam is recording. Is anyone else recording this meeting? Would you please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Other than our honorees and families, is there anyone here for public participation? Good. We're going to quickly go through acceptance of the minutes. So I have the, we're going to do separate because we have executive session and, oh, wait, executive session, May 12th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So that's it. Did I miss something? No.
The regular minutes.
Yeah, the regular minutes. I don't seem to have in front of me, but that's okay. Regular minutes. Oh, it's down here. Thank you. Regular minutes. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. So tonight is an incredibly special night. We always look forward to it and we're so grateful we're able to do it this year with you folks and your families. We know how challenging it's been for you. I promise you, we recognize that and we applaud you for sticking to it, for having that intrinsic quality that you must all have to have carried on despite challenges that none of us ever saw coming. We are extremely grateful for your tenacity, for your willingness to work hard, to work with your teachers in all kinds of different situations. We have new ways of learning and new ways of really not wanting to learn, but doing so nevertheless, and you've made us all proud. So for us, this is a fantastic day and we're going to do it a little differently. Normally, we have you all parade around. You don't have to do that tonight. We're going to ask you to come up and accept a token gift from us, you know, in recognition of your incredible achievement. I don't know if Dr. Starkey wants to add anything at this point? Nope? Okay. Good.
Okay.
Yes.
May I begin?
You may. All right. Thank you. It's a tremendous honor to be here tonight to present you the top 10 students in the class of 2021. I ask each of our scholars to stand when your name is called. Gianna Emily Ferreira Manning. Victoria Helena Hart, who is on the way. She had a lacrosse match. Okay. So she will be here. Megan Mary Lenza. Margaret Grace Gallagher. Devon Amanda Bolt. Madison Brooke Gonidero. Allison Jade McSweeney. Matthew Jared Darling. Allison Pauline Johns. And we have Sarah Elizabeth Gillette, who couldn't be with us this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, the top 10 of our class of 2020. These 10 students represent the very best of Aponequit. Collectively, they have taken numerous advanced placement courses and honors level courses. They are members of the National Honor Society and have completed more than 220 hours of community service. They are student athletes, student performers, and club members who have Laker pride and who are a delight and a privilege to know. They have, as our core values proclaim, achieved, been resilient, engaged in honorable behavior, and advocated for themselves and others. And each of our 2021 top 10 members has composed his or her parting thoughts and will share those with you tonight. Thank you. You may be seated. First to the podium tonight is Allison Johns.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ally Johns and it is an honor to be here to speak in front of the school committee today. To give a little background about myself, I am the secretary for our class, a member of NHS. I have placed six at DECA districts with my partner. I have attended DECA states and I have been on the girls varsity soccer team since freshman year. It has been a pleasure to be immersed in the ARHS community for the past four years and I'm going to miss it. My fondest memories at Aponequit are the Spirit Weeks that we hold and every homecoming that we have had. These events unite our student body to feel the school spirit and feel connected to each other. For the academic aspect of Aponequit, there are so many great classes to take. I would say that my most challenging class was Spanish II honors with Senora La Compt during freshman year. Making the transition from learning Spanish in middle school to taking this class in high school was definitely a challenge since there was a disconnect between the two schools for this subject. This class pushed me to go beyond my comfort zone when speaking in Spanish and although it was difficult at the moment, I grew to become confident in the language and it has made Spanish become one of my favorite classes to go to. There has also been so many teachers and staff that have had a great impact on my experience in the FLRSD community, but I want to personally highlight my eighth grade math teacher, Mr. Barry. Mr. Barry not only taught me how to solve problems and the importance of hard work, but he also taught me to have confidence in my answers and not be afraid to ask for help. Eighth grade was one of my favorite years and I owe a lot of that to him. I want to thank both of my parents for supporting me and shaping me into the person that I am today, my sisters for always having my back, my friends for making the best memories, and my coaches for pushing me to grow and find myself in the sports that I love. I wouldn't be who I am today without any of you, so I thank you. As I take the next step in my life, I plan on attending Northeastern University to study either health sciences or environmental science. And before I finish, my recommendation for the school committee is to give classes, to give more classes the opportunity to go on more field trips. Throughout my entire high school career, I only went on a few field trips and I feel as though learning in an outside environment that is away from the classroom is very important. Having the opportunity to learn through hands-on experiences is engaging and helps students really understand what is being taught. Thank you for your time and congratulations to the top 10 for all of your hard work and for being here today.
Congratulations. Thank you. Matthew Darling.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for having me here today. My name is Matthew Darling and I would like to start off by saying how grateful and honored I am to be presenting up here with these nine amazing peers of mine, or I guess eight today, who I've known for the majority of my school career. Every single student up here had, oh, I cannot talk. Every single student up here has seen their fair share of battles and success. As for me, I've received high and highest honors throughout my high school career. I've taken a total of six AP courses and I've received various science awards as well as a Laker Nation award. However, these are not the accomplishments I am proud of. I work around 25 hours a week on top of school and homework and even though I've been juggling AP Calculus, Physics, Biology, and Spanish at the same time, I am proud to say I have finally made it. Through all the challenges, struggles, and pressures of time, I managed to get a spot up here on the top 10. In my mind, if I was able to do this, who knows what I'll be able to do in my future. In regards to that matter, I'll be attending Western New England University to major in biomedical engineering. I genuinely have to thank my AP Physics teacher, Ms. Mills, for many of my decisions. Her class is a very rigorous course, but she has a visible passion for physics and engineering, which she wholeheartedly tried to pass on to her students. One of my fondest memories is when last year on Valentine's Day, she offered every one of her students candy with a little card attached. The cards each had a scientist and a fun little saying, mine being from Andrew Celsius saying my temperature goes off the scales when you're nearby. Now, I thought that was pretty funny. If you don't, I apologize. But when I laid my eyes on that corny card, Ms. Mills hooked yet another student into the world of STEM. I would like to thank Ms. Mills, along with the other teachers I've had throughout my high school career, as well as my parents and siblings for bringing me where I am today. Lastly, I wish that there were more opportunities to explore the field of STEM while I was here and I strongly believe that more classes need to be put into place to strengthen the next generation of scientific minds. Thank you.
Allison McSweeney.
Hello. My name is Allison McSweeney and I am honored to be here today and proud of my fellow peers who have worked so hard to earn their top places in the class. Throughout my high school career, I have challenged myself and dedicated much time for my education. I have taken challenging AP classes such as AP Language and Composition, AP Psychology, AP Literature, and AP Calculus and pushed myself to succeed. I also chose many electives that spiked my interest. I have been a competitive gymnast in the entirety of my schooling as well. And throughout high school, I was a member of the DECA Business Club. Along with my DECA partner, Victoria Hurt, I placed first at district competition, fifth at states, and went on to compete at ICDC this year in the buying and merchandising category. It was a very proud accomplishment. One of my fondest memories in my time in the Freetown Lakeville School District took place in fifth grade at Grace when we had an invention convention. We came up with a new product, made a commercial and a poster, and the best inventions were voted on. It was a fun, unique, and exciting and challenging project. Some other memories I look back fondly on are the football games at Aponequit and competing in the DECA state competition in Boston my junior year. My most interesting class was AP Psychology. I really enjoyed learning about the mind and the reasons for our human behavior. It was different from anything I had studied in the past and the subject matter kept me invested throughout the year. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rosa as he encouraged me to succeed in business in DECA and support my interest in fashion and the career path that I wish to pursue. I'd also like to recognize Mrs. Cronin and Mrs. Lima for just being amazing. I want to thank my big brother, Aiden, for inspiring me to succeed and leading the way through his hard work and great accomplishments. And of course, I would like to make some big thank yous to my closest friends and my parents who have been there and supported me through it all. Next year, I will be attending LaSalle University and majoring in fashion merchandising and management. I hope to be a successful businesswoman in the fashion industry. I'm excited to see what my future holds and I am ready to take on the next chapter of my life.
Madison Gonidero.
Hello. My name is Madison Gonidero and I am honored to be here in front of you today. A little bit about me is I'm a member of the National Honor Society and I received an ARHS Science Award for Chemistry my sophomore year. I also recently received a science award this year for Anatomy and Physiology. Some of my fondest memories at ARHS have been when the whole grade gets together to show their school spirit, whether that be at football games, pep rallies, or during Spirit Week. However, my favorite memory is going to the Fine Arts Museum in Boston with my Spanish class because it was the perfect balance of education and fun. My favorite subject in school has been Spanish because I find it very interesting to learn about a different culture and love speaking the language. I also know that speaking and understanding Spanish is a skill that will help me in the future and that is why I find the class so valuable. Every member of the district has impacted my life in some way, but it all started with my first grade teacher, Mrs. Corsier. Mrs. Corsier inspired me to always give my complete effort in everything I do and she even let me sit right next to her in class so that I would feel more comfortable. It is for these reasons that I am recognizing her in my diploma to show that I'm eternally grateful for her kindness. Along with Mrs. Corsier, I would also like to thank my family for being an incredible support system as well as my number one cheerleaders. I would especially like to recognize my parents for always pushing me to be the best that I can be while supporting my growth every step of the way. I would also like to thank my older brother, Zachary, for being an incredible role model and the person I've looked up to since I was little. In the fall, I will be attending Providence College in Rhode Island and I am currently undeclared.
Devon Bolt.
Hello, members of the school committee. My name is Devon Bolt and I am honored to be here speaking to you today. My four years at Aponequit have been some of the best years of my life and I have made many memories and learned many critical skills that I will use for the rest of my future. Based on my MCAS scores freshman and sophomore year, I received the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship that I could use at any Massachusetts State school. Freshman year, I was given the science award from my biology teacher and I was inducted into the National Honor Society junior year and served as the secretary senior year. Additionally, I was recognized as a South Coast Conference Academic All-Star on April 29th. Aponequit also provides core value awards to students that show notable qualities outside of academics. It's actually a funny story because I was given one of these awards when I caught my friend from falling and hitting her head when she fainted. One of my fondest memories at Aponequit was making the freshman year volleyball team. It taught me that every individual on a team is important and is crucial to reach the overall goal. This experience ultimately led me, led to me becoming the Varsity Libero senior year and I am forever grateful that I joined that team. By far, some of my most challenging classes have been AP Biology and AP Calculus. I decided to take AP Bio junior year. It was a complete shift from every course I had taken up until then, but changed the way I approached schoolwork forever. This adjustment led me to achieve a five on the exam and I learned more in that class than any other and I use the knowledge every day in my senior year classes. AP Calculus has also shown me that nothing is as easy as it seems and it requires hard work and determination to persevere. I would like to identify my volleyball coach, Megan Giamalvo, who believed in me when I did not believe in myself and she inspired me with self-confidence. I would also like to identify Mrs. Irwin, my art teacher of two years. She helped me find my passion for art. Beyond her teaching skills, she was a teacher that proved that she truly does care about her students' well-being and wants them to thrive in and out of school. I would like to thank all of the Aponequit staff as well as my mom and dad for allowing me to create my own self-guidelines and contemplate what I wanted from school career and life in general. I plan on attending Northeastern University in Boston this fall. I'm majoring in environmental science and minoring marine biology and entrepreneurship. Thank you so much for letting me speak here tonight.
Margaret Gallagher.
I guess it's just going to be stuck on my earring. Good evening. My name is Maggie Gallagher and I am a proud graduating senior and member of Laker Nation. Throughout my high school career, I have been heavily involved in various extracurricular offerings such as student council, student government, Green Team, National Honor Society, and Yearbook Club. I served on the Aponequit Student Council Executive Board for two years, holding the positions of historian as a sophomore and vice president as a junior. After serving as a class representative for three years for student government, I now hold the title of senior class treasurer. I am also a four-year member and three-season captain of Aponequit's varsity cross-country and indoor and outdoor track and field teams. In my four years competing in athletics for Aponequit, I have been named to eight Standard Times All-Scholastic SuperTeams, earned Boston Globe and Boston Herald All-Scholastic honors, earned SCC All-Star honors, and an SCC Sportsmanship Award, and was named the Standard Times Female Runner of the Year in the fall of 2019. Most recently, I was the female South Coast Conference Individual Champion in the Fall Two Cross-Country season. In addition to my athletic achievements, I have earned various academic accolades such as science awards in honors biology, chemistry, and physics, as well as a certificate of merit with highest honors from the Society of Women Engineers. Outside of Aponequit, I have also been a dancer at the Kaliakar Studio of Dance in Lakeville for the past 15 years. I have been a member of Kaliakar's competitive dance teams for the past eight years and I am currently the captain for the Senior Ensemble Dance Team. When I have the chance, I like to volunteer my time for the Aponequit Athletic Boosters, the St. John Newman Parish, the Freetown Youth Athletic Association, and Aponequit's peer tutoring program. I could not be more thankful to have been a member of the Aponequit community for these past four years. I'm especially grateful for the academic opportunities I was able to take advantage of, like the five advanced placement classes I completed, and my only regret is that I could not have enrolled in these accelerated classes as an underclassman and completed more of them. The teaching staff and faculty here are so supportive and accommodating and truly passionate about helping us students reach our full potential. I would particularly like to thank my coaches, Mr. Rutledge, Mr. Galant, Ms. Cowley, Mr. Wallaka, and Mr. Fife for always pushing me beyond my limits and teaching me that my only true opponent is myself. I would also like to thank my closest friends for their unconditional love and support throughout middle school and high school, and for many of them throughout elementary school as well. And lastly, I would like to express my gratitude for the two reasons why I'm on this earth, my parents, Rob and Lisa Gallagher. Thank you for believing in me even when I didn't believe in myself and teaching me to be kind, disciplined, and thoughtful in everything I do. This fall, I will be attending Stonehill College in Easton as a member of the Moreau Honors Program and Stonehill's Division Two Cross-Country and Track and Field Teams. I will be pursuing a bachelor's degrees in environmental science and environmental engineering in Stonehill's Conjoined Five-Year Program with the University of Notre Dame as well as a minor in Spanish. Thank you all for your attention and for all the time, resources, and energy you devote to providing members of our school district with the tools needed to cultivate a positive and engaging learning environment for all students.
Megan Lenza.
My name is Megan Lenza and I would like to thank the school committee for the opportunity to speak today. I've been a part of the National Honor Society since my junior year and I received two science awards as a freshman and a sophomore. As a part of DECA, my partner and I placed in the top 10 at districts during 10th and 11th grade. I've had many fun experiences while attending this school district, but my fondest memory would be having a tennis match in Martha's Vineyard. When I was in 10th grade, the Lady Lakers tennis team made the tournament and we had to take a ferry. Taking the trip together that lasted a whole day and standing outside on the ferry was an experience I am forever grateful for and demonstrated the amazing bond we all have. The most challenging class I have taken while at Aponequit would be AP United States History. Our country has an abundance of historical information to learn and although it was difficult to remember it all, the class was very fun. I would like to thank all of the staff for helping to make this school welcoming and being supportive of the students. I especially want to thank my parents and my brothers PJ and Jimmy for all of the encouragement and help throughout the years and leading me to success. Next year, I will be attending Bridgewater State University to study secondary education and Spanish. Thank you.
Class valedictorian, Victoria Hart.
Hello. My name is Victoria Hart and I am very excited to share some details about my Aponequit experience here tonight. A summary of some of the awards I have received include the freshman Biology Science Award and the AP Environmental Science Award. I've also been recognized as a member of the SCC Field Hockey SuperTeam and have received numerous awards for my involvement with DECA. My partner, Ally McSweeney, and I have placed first at districts two years in a row and fifth at the state competition in the buying and merchandising category and we recently competed at ICDC. I've made countless memories here at Aponequit. One of my favorites includes being able to stay overnight at the Prudential Center for our state DECA competition. The most interesting class I have taken has to be AP Environmental Science because it really opened my eyes to all of the pollution and damage we are doing to our environment. My teacher, Mrs. Kirk, did a great job of inspiring her students to be more environmentally sustainable. I would like to give a shout out to my field hockey and lacrosse coach, Coach C, for teaching me the importance of hard work and dedication. Playing sports allowed me to mature into a better version of myself and I have heard a thank for that. I'm also going to say thank you to my family, specifically my mom and dad, for being a constant fountain of support and for always believing in me. In the fall, I will be attending Northeastern University. My current major is marketing and I plan to minor in environmental sustainability. DECA has inspired me to explore the business world and Mrs. Kirk ignited my passion for environmental science. I would like to incorporate sustainability into big corporations as they are the leading producers of pollution in our world. My recommendation to the school committee would be to provide more funding for our field hockey and lacrosse teams. Our game fields are in rough condition, especially compared to the baseball, football, tennis, basketball, and track fields, all which appear to be better funded. The field hockey and lacrosse practice fields don't even have lines on them. Installing a turf field would be a dream, but I understand that this may not be plausible due to its high price. Alocating additional funding to allow us to play on a rented turf field like Faxton Field or completely redoing our fields so they are level and green would be a solid compromise that future student athletes would appreciate. Thank you for your consideration on this matter and for taking the time to acknowledge our top 10. I truly appreciate it.
Class valedictorian, Gianna Manning.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the school committee, Superintendent Madeiras, and Dr. Starkey for the great honor of speaking before you this evening. My name is Gianna Manning and I am the valedictorian of the class of 2021. I transferred to the Freetown Lakeville School District in the fourth grade and throughout my academic career in this district, I have had the privilege of being taught by supportive and committed teachers who have forever impacted my life. As I reflect on my time here at Aponequit, I am thankful and proud to have received various science awards, the Abigail Adams Scholarship, and most recently, the superintendent's Award of Excellence. In life, I have always set high expectations and goals for myself and in eighth grade, I set the goal of becoming president of the National Honor Society and last year, I was honored to be elected into this position. Through this role, I have gained important leadership experience and developed a passion for serving others in the community. Most recently, I have been working at the local food pantry and this has been such a rewarding experience. Another leadership experience that I am grateful for is being vice president of the class for the past two years and being able to give my peers a voice. My fondest memory in high school was the district DECA trips with my close friends and being able to compete against other schools while having fun. I will also, I will also always cherish the Friday night football games and cheering on my team. Looking back on my courses, I have had a lot of great teachers and one of the most notable teachers was my eighth grade algebra teacher, Ms. Udarian, who I thank for developing my strong math foundation and always challenging me in class. I will be remiss to not mention my favorite and most challenging course, which was AP Biology, with Ms. Ferreira, my mom, who did not put me up to this. I loved the labs, rigor, and content and it is a field I fell in love with due to this course and I plan on majoring in biology. I will attend the University of Massachusetts Amherst and will be majoring in biology. I will be a part of a select program called Biotap, which is a biology advanced program of only 50 freshmen of the 700 honor students out of the 5,000 incoming freshmen. With my biology degree, with my biology major and research opportunities through Biotap program, I plan on pursuing a medical degree in hopes of becoming a doctor. I have greatly enjoyed my time at Aponequit and if there's one recommendation that I would give, it would be for the fee for the AP exams to be waived and paid for by the school system. Thank you for your time and for this great opportunity. A special thank you to my parents and my brother Colin for always supporting me and encouraging me to pursue my dreams.
Dr. Starkey, if I may, your valedictorian brought it up and I can't let it go. There are three young women here tonight that have been instrumental in a very young food pantry, the Freetown Regional Food Pantry, and thanks to Ms. Ferreira, we have had good National Honor Society attendance. I do want to thank from the bottom of my heart I do want to thank, from the bottom of my heart, Gianna, Devon, and Madison. You've really made a big difference to hundreds of families in Freetown, Lakeville, and Berkeley, and beyond, so thank you for that.
So ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for hearing from our students. They have shared with me via these speeches and through conversation some of their recommendations for the school, some of those things we're working on, and some of those things we will certainly be pursuing. Some will involve your endorsement and your help, and I think the word "a satisfactory compromise" was, that phrase was great, Victoria. These seniors are heading into a series of incredible activities that we have lined up for them. When you think about September 15th, coming back to school and not being sure what school was going to look like and how we were all going to interact together, and here we sit today at a presentation that last year was virtual, and here we embark on some great activities. Tomorrow, the seniors are coming in to turn in some items to us and to get their medical records and to learn more about graduation. Friday, they will take an unbelievable journey, a senior walk. All members of the class will wear their caps and gowns and process from here to the middle school, from the middle school to Grace. They'll board buses donated by Kenrezendis and the company, and they will take a ride over to FES and to AES to walk backwards and visit all of the people who've had great impact on them. So we look forward to Friday. And then next week, Tuesday night is the prom, right here on school grounds under a tent, another event that we weren't sure we were going to have. They're getting a prom, they're able to bring guests. We will be maskless, outside, under the stars, and dancing, things that just seemed like impossibilities not too long ago. They have a banquet next Thursday night under that same tent. Food trucks will roll up, your books will be handed out. It'll be a fun night. Friday night is an award ceremony over at the Freetown-Lakeville Middle School indoors, and these students will be at that affair. And then we have graduation on Saturday, June 5th, at 10:00 a.m. out on the football field. Although a ticketed event, it will likely be one of the largest crowds we've hosted on school grounds because we have such a large graduating class. So really looking forward to graduation, and I know you all are too. I thank you, parents, for being so supportive, for bringing us such wonderful students, and I thank the school committee for your endless support, and all the fine educators of the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District for helping these students to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this point, unfortunately, we can't have cookies, but it sounds like you have a very full agenda over the next week or so. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much for sharing your stories with us. They're very meaningful and impactful, and I think we've all been affected by just how much you are coming out of and what you brought to us. So thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I think I speak for everybody here. We are very grateful, and we are wishing you all the very best as you open up this next chapter of your young lives. And next year, I hope we have at least one other guy, although the women are doing great, I just have to say. So thank you so much, and you do not have to linger for the rest of this meeting. Go out and enjoy. Thank you. Yeah, if we could, if we could, just so that we can mingle with you guys for just a few minutes. Old business, we need the budget report, FY21.
Yes, included in your packet is a general fund overview year-to-date for FY21. We are tracking favorably in each category when comparing budget to actual results. In the coming weeks, the business office will be in the process of reviewing and fine-tuning our year-end projections and preparing for year-end transition. In relation to our COVID expenditures, just a few quick updates here. We are currently working with FEMA on one of our requests from the fall to fund some PPE. It's possible we may ultimately receive more reimbursements from FEMA, but it's still currently unknown. To date, we have been approved for $10,613 for custodial overtime from FEMA. We will also be proceeding with submitting a request to Freetown for the COVID CARES Act reimbursements as it relates to unreimbursed costs. And that's my update for FY21.
And when is that, Freetown?
So their meeting, I believe, is on June 8th. I'll be sending an email sometime this week.
Okay, thank you. That will be good. Okay, thank you for that. And now the 22, FY22?
I have no further updates other than what is provided in your packet.
Next town meeting is Monday, June 7th, Freetown, here in the high school gymnasium.
Thank you.
I just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So we're going to do the PPE for the next year, correct?
That's correct.
Wishful thinking, and we don't need all this PPE.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's somewhat wishful thinking. I think we're in a great trajectory. My indications from the commissioner is that there'll be some capacity needed, and so we'll be well-prepared, but certainly probably not to the extent that we just had last time through.
Got it. And then, rough numbers, potentially, what E and D?
So I'm working on that, and I can't really give you a solid number right now, but I don't think it's going to be lower than where we currently are at.
Okay.
If everything plays out like I hope. One of the big unknowns is the timing of the reimbursements from Plymouth County for the Lakeville CARES. It took about six months for the first batch to come in. However, I have heard through the grapevine unofficially that they're trying to push everything through by June, so that could swing our number a bit, but I'm going to plan out those two scenarios and see where we fall.
But that scenario wouldn't have any negative impact to where our E and D is, correct?
Well, it could. It could have a negative impact, but it would just be a timing difference from this year into the next. We would sweep it back in next year.
Anyone else? Any updates? Okay, so now we're into new business, the COVID-19 timeline plan update.
I'll also be brief. My COVID reports and timeline and planning updates hopefully will be just superintendent updates shortly, right? We're going to continue the dashboard for the remainder of the school year, just to be sure we're giving numbers out. But just for this, for example, this past month, we've had two positive cases each week. We only had one case this week. So I provided those numbers for you, some additional dates. We have 14 school days left, unbelievable. One town is in the gray relation to, you know, Freetown and Lakeville's numbers continue to remain low. We're excited to offer an opportunity for families, a free COVID vaccination opportunity for ages 12 and up at the middle school tomorrow from 3:00 to 6:00. I plan to go over there. We had 70 signed up in advance as of noon today, and we just opened it up to walk-ins. So that was not the case before where they had to pre-register, so we're hoping to get over 100. I can tell you that the nurses are pleased with the numbers because they're hearing from a lot of families that have taken advantage of their own pediatricians and other opportunities. So a lot of kids have been vaccinated and families have. So it's just a great opportunity on the campus here. It's right at the middle school cafeteria facilitated by that. I'd be happy to answer specific questions. I did ask Dr. Starkey to highlight some of the activities. I think she did a wonderful job of that, some things that are happening. We do have a promotion assembly in eighth grade that's highlighted there. So because of some of the relaxation of the restrictions, we've been able to have no masks outdoors, right? So kids are recessed, and it really has opened up some opportunities for kids, and I think, no pun intended, a breath of fresh air in relation to finishing up this school year on a positive and to incorporate. You saw, the campus is vibrant, right? We had one of the kids getting back from a lacrosse match. We had multiple activities going on. You'll see that across all the schools. We're real excited. We're starting to fill all the staffing positions. We are beginning a reentry plan in relation to getting all of our kids back in the fall. It's a little early to dictate kind of where we're going to be at relative to any restrictions or modifications, but the trajectory is positive. We're hearing no spacing limitations within the school for the fall. We are hearing probably some aspect of masking, but I think it's still early for the commissioner to be making judgment. Our understanding is we're going to be receiving some guidance. I did put on the back page of the COVID piece, we're already looking at bus routes going out in August 23rd, drivers meeting there, so that's about two weeks before the start of school. And obviously, by then, we'll know, you know, if we have any capacity issues. We're back to full capacity, right? Our kids are back in, and that's been going real well. And as I've highlighted, when you heard our top 10 kids talking today, they really made no mention of the uniqueness of how challenging this year was. They just talked about all the exciting things, and I think, you know, getting the seniors back as early as we did compared to other school districts, which was in March, if you recall, allowed them to have three or four solid months of normalcy for them and a lot of activities. I give the school committee a ton of credit. You've supported me throughout this whole process in relation to rolling this out, which has not been an easy task. My leadership team, principals and staff, and certainly parents in the community have done a phenomenal job, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You have a couple. So what about capacity for summer programming?
So we are still waiting for the summer camp guidance from the state, which Lisa Patrico is anxiously waiting. We are hoping, well, I shouldn't say we're hoping, we're planning to be able to open up a little bit more capacity than what was previously set up. We still have the six-week session where it's every two weeks, so full week. So we still have, because of the restrictions being mostly outside, we still have some of the limitations relative to masks indoors because of the activities, but we're encouraged. I don't think we'll get the numbers that we've had, Mrs. Fox, in the past, but we feel very confident that we can run some safe programs between the campus programs that we're running, our summer academic recovery programs that are going to take place, our extended school year programs, which Liz is overseeing, and Kids Cafe. We're excited. I think I'll see a lot of kids back here on campus and provide the first step back. I don't think we'll be at full capacity based on some limitations we'll still have because the state is telling us, you know, guidance, but we need to have that now.
Yeah, you need it for everyone to make those plans. One other question, just actually for the viewing audience. The vaccination is which vaccine?
So the vaccine right now, the only vaccine 12 and up that's been FDA approved is the Pfizer, to date. I know there's been a lot of activity in relation to Moderna and how successful. So it's the Pfizer.
Right, I think it's important for people to understand that's two shots.
Yeah, so we actually, it is two shots, and we actually have, I should be remiss, in the guidance that I've been sending out in the one call, we already have the second date lined up in June.
Very important. Good, good. Any, good, Steve?
When is that second date?
It'll be three weeks out, it should be.
So after the school closes?
It is, it is. Seventeenth. Thank you.
Just after.
Did we list that on the, I don't think we actually listed that, it's just June 17th, but we're prepared to have the campus in place. And there. Any other questions?
Just a comment, thank you to you and the team for that opportunity. I think it's great just to be able to come to school and get the vaccine. Just clarification on the numbers, you're hoping to get to 100 because you have 100 shots, or do you?
Oh, no, no, they.
They'll give you whatever you?
There's been, there's been no limit placed on the numbers.
Oh, really?
We were required, in order to be able to fund it, we had to have 35, or they would not have come at no charge. So we certainly exceeded that. When I throw that number out, I don't want to mislead people. We're not going to be shutting down people. So if we get 250 folks here, the doses are there. They will be provided for those families and children and kids 12 and up.
That's good clarification because it was such a push to, you know, get your employee to do the shot, so as long as people are aware that you can get what you need.
And now, what we are saying, and like Cam, I know his role in this, what we are asking is if you don't, if you're not pre-registered, it would be best if you came early because there is some paperwork that you need to fill out. So it's 3:00 to 6:00. We would encourage you to come at the earlier timeframe if possible, but we'll work that window. It's wide open.
Great.
Well, it's also helpful for people who are getting involved, even if they're not here on campus, of summer programming. So families want their kids to be vaccinated.
So the good news for the board is we will have detailed report on the 16th, right? Our June 16th meeting, which will be the last day of school, and we'll have extended school year program. We'll have an update. I think we talked about having some additional numbers in relation to registrations and things for our different academic programs. All of that will be lined up. There'll be, the good news is we have one June meeting.
That is good.
The bad news is it'll probably be, you know, somewhat lengthy of an agenda, but it'll be timely, and it will kickstart our summer season.
Right, thank you. We're moving on to the, we need a vote on the wastewater treatment plant operations, RFP, request for proposals.
Yes, so included in your packet are the results from our May 7th, 2021 official bid opening for the operation and maintenance of the main campus's wastewater treatment plant. There were two bids received, both companies of which have recent history of servicing our wastewater treatment plant here on campus. We believe they are both highly qualified. The bid is for a one-year period with two optional years based on service performance. Based on the review of the technical components and pricing, the director of facilities and I am recommending that the contract is awarded to Natural Systems Utilities, and as a result, I am requesting a vote from the committee.
Questions, anyone?
So just need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. To accept the bid as presented.
Second. Discussion, Steve.
Two questions. Where does this follow mine with what we budgeted for?
Yes, actually, so it would actually come in slightly under the budget. We are saving money compared to even the prior three years on this. The prior contract was about $165,750 with the other costs, and we did project some increases there, so I think it's going to be a slight savings. The base fee actually went down. Last three years, the base fee was $136,800, and we're now sitting at $132,595. Those other costs are estimates and typically are estimated on the higher end, so I do think we're going to come in under budget.
Got it. My second question is, any capital-type projects related to this? I know we've made some healthy improvements across the district. Is this something that we need to look at in future years, or what's the?
Yep, so this operator would come through with some recommendations. The prior operator, Natural Systems Utilities, the one we're recommending, actually was the operator who helped install the UV section of the plant. I believe they were the last contractor to engage in a larger project with us, so it'll be interesting to see their thought process on recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
So there is a motion and a second on the table for what Natural Systems Utilities? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. I lost my agenda already.
So the next item is the last item, actually, before we get through, and that is for the MSBA statement of interest.
That's right.
For Assawamsted, so we've got some exciting news, and I'll defer to Kara for that because they took, the town of Lakeville took that action formally last night and voted on this action. I'll turn it to her.
Yep, so the school district wishes to pursue a statement of interest opportunity as it relates to window replacements for the Assawamsted Elementary School. We are requesting a vote, which gives us authorization to submit the application package. However, it does not obligate either the MSBA, the town of Lakeville, or the school district in any way financially to perform the project. If the project is approved, the MSBA will fund approximately 53.53% based on today's reimbursement rate. That is subject to change. The town of Lakeville voted last night unanimously and approved May 25th to allow the superintendent to proceed with this statement of interest. I am requesting a vote with a specific language as indicated in your packet materials by the school committee, along with a signature from the school committee chairperson in order to proceed.
I'll make a motion to accept a push forward, a statement of interest for AES with the town of Lakeville.
Great, second? Is there any discussion?
So tight timeline with June 1st. I know in the past, we've had a full, can we just take part of that to satisfy that requirement, or is this a whole rework?
I'm sorry?
We went to the MSBA with a full project for Assawamsted.
So this, we're prepared to send this forward in this, we meet the deadline. In fact, she's waiting for this vote tonight. I reviewed the final draft.
Okay, good.
This will be going out this week. Yeah, we're done.
They don't have to go do it now.
No, it's ready to roll.
I did a final review and edit today with Kara, and so once this vote is taken, it will be submitted by the end of the week and meet the deadline and timeline, and we just wait to hear back from them.
Excellent.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries. Are you in? That's it. Nope, other business, anything else?
I always have a few things.
Yeah, you do.
So, Mr. Superintendent, can we, for our June 16th meeting, like to close a loop on class size, right? I know we had an open question during budget discussion, especially at FES. I'd like to, you know, where we're at, any new? I'd like to, you know, where we're at, any new, not home school students, but.
We will have kindergarten screening completed by then.
Exactly, right, just every group on that.
June 16th, Renee will provide it by grade level and breakdown, so you can see those sections and obviously how the impact.
Yeah, because that was a big item that we were a little bit concerned about.
Absolutely, that will definitely be provided on the 16th, in advance of the 16th.
I will say that, you know, the students always bring great ideas, right, which is incredible. Some of them are, you know, very specific as the lacrosse and field hockey player wants a new lacrosse and field hockey field. I really don't blame her as they're playing out by the road, and I hate to be the person who has to go shag the ball, right, for them. But they do raise some points about the Spanish curriculum, right? And I think that's something that we need to look at as far as the transition from middle school to the high school, and now that we're adding another special class, what does that do to Spanish, right? So I think that's something, we're not going to solve here, but I think that needs to make sure that we keep an eye on that because of the fact of, we want that opportunity, such as the young lady who got challenged with Spanish II honors.
After a year.
Her freshman year, and if I do the math correctly, they have to do Spanish II in order to get up to that AP level by the time they get to senior year.
Mr. Higgins and I have had conversations about aligning Spanish in the middle school to the program that's going on at the high school, so there's a smoother transition.
Got it.
So we're in the process of getting the materials to make that happen. But we used to do it in elementary school too, remember?
And we can have an update too on the 16th, just kind of, I can have Pat reach back to Barbara and to Jack, just give some updates there.
And my last point, you know, it's always strange how our kids are listening, right, across the board. And some of you may have received the same email, but as we talk about the mental health of students and the anxiety of students, what have you. So I have two 8th grade students, Tristan and Leo, who reached out asking about the impact of anxiety and mental health issues in the school. This was a civil action project, and they were trying to make a recommendation similar to what we ask our, these top 10 students in there. I will definitely forward this on to the administration, you may have already received it, but I think the fact that you have a younger population concerned about that as well, right, I think it just goes to show, and it's been a hot topic of conversation over the past several months as relates to budget, right? So as we bring our students back for hopefully a normal year next year, and we've done a great job in doing that, I hope that continues to be a focus in that piece.
Those same students, so just so your, the board here is in the community, involved me in this process too because they reached out to me, I was interviewed as part of a civics 8th grade project, and they, that was the primary focus almost of every group that I went to. I went to multiple groups to be interviewed, and ways to incorporate mental health breaks and opportunities balanced with instructional learning time. They even had the number of minimum hours of instructional time, they had done their homework, and so I went over there the other day and went through that process, but it was neat to see the kids at that level engaged and understanding. We've talked a little about maybe a longer school day, which of course, you can imagine how that went over like.
Yeah, yeah.
Just pointing to Europe.
But I do think it is, it's something we can certainly take a look at, and we are taking a look at relative to S and monies available as it relates to ways we can build in. I think there was a lot of lessons, positive lessons learned as a result of this past year, and that's one, ways that we can make our kids more well-rounded and feel better about what they're doing in addition to academic rigor.
Yeah, I will say their attempt to, as they put it, lower the amount of homework in tests, I said was not going to be something that this body will.
We can't even.
Do that fight, so go do your homework and test now. But good to hear that they are also outreaching too, so.
Well, and to your point, they're listening and they're caring and they're taking it to the next level, so this is a priority, but we need to, we can't push this away. This is going to be important.
Yeah, and as the board doesn't need to be reminded, but it was a real emphasis in our strategic plan prior to the pandemic, if you recall. If you look closely at our strategic, that was a focus, and certainly this year has only exacerbated, heightened the need in the priority. Thank you.
And only if your vote by this committee would hold off the rain for next Saturday. It would.
Don't look at the long-range forecast now that they're correct.
Don't, and remember that it frequently changes.
That's right.
So you can't go there. All right, if there's no further business to come before the committee, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.